Hello and welcome to LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. The LA City Council President unveils some bold ideas in his new term, including embracing the marijuana industry, and more affordable housing could be at stake. Gil Reyes has details from City Hall. Gil?
Yes, Yana, LA City Council President Herb Wesson really thinking outside the box in terms of solving some of LA's biggest problems. Among his ideas, a so-called Bank of Los Angeles that will help new struggling businesses get by, including sellers of recreational marijuana, which is, of course, now legal in California.
Let's look at affording the cannabis industry the opportunity to be customers of this bank.
Addressing his council colleagues, City Council President Herb Wesson says, "Why not? We already have a Bank of America, also a California Bank and Trust, so why not get even more local with more options for Angelinos?" He says a Los Angeles municipal bank could cater to LA's cannabis businesses. The major banks avoid them because pot remains illegal under federal law. But under California law, marijuana is legal. In fact, the city is expected to begin issuing licenses to sell early next year.
I think that we have an opportunity to corner the market, which could make this one of the strongest banks, not just in Los Angeles, but maybe in the state and maybe in the country.
A study by the Roosevelt Institute finds such a municipal bank could also help build more affordable housing by offering below-market rate loans to developers. Wesson's new agenda, his first since re-elected council president, also includes expanding the Embrace LA program, increasing dialogue on race relations with hate crimes on the rise. In many ways, the city of LA is defying leaders in Washington by embracing undocumented immigrants, the marijuana industry, and progressive ideas.
We have to show courage today to ensure that we can provide a better life for our children and our grandchildren tomorrow.
At City Hall, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Council President Herb Wesson also plans to expand the city's Art Cycle LA program. It provides free recycled city computers to families that need them, Wi-Fi included. Well, turning now to the changing face of the LA City Council as another female council member is elected and welcomed to the LA City Council District 7. Rasha Goel has more on the inauguration of Monica Rodriguez.
And then I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Monica Rodriguez was recently sworn in by her third-grade teacher as the council member for the 7th district.
I truly believe in these positions. We are only limited by our imagination. And for us, it's going to be incredibly important to pull together at a time when many people have been very successful in dividing our communities. We're going to be united in making sure that this district finally gets the respect and the dignity that it deserves.
Rodriguez is no stranger to City Hall. Prior to her election to the Los Angeles City Council, Rodriguez served as vice president of the Los Angeles Board of Public Works overseeing essential city services. Mayor Eric Garcetti appointed her to the board in 2013.
I'm so proud to know you. I know you are so proud to serve these folks who you know. And what you do will be not just great, it will be good for all of us.
Nuri Martinez, who has been friends with Monica Rodriguez since high school, shared her enthusiasm about working together.
And for Monica and I, because we're from the northeast San Fernando Valley and neighboring districts, and because we know our neighborhoods inside and out, we just need to do our job and fight for the resources that this district has for so many, many years has not gotten its fair share.
Monica Rodriguez is also the first female council member in District 7. Now, this district has not had a council member for 10 to 11 months, but she tells us she is very optimistic about bringing the necessary changes to the area.
There's quite a bit of very basic infrastructure. There's a lot to help restore the staffing levels of our fire departments, which have been cut, making sure that we can increase the service delivery from our police department. There's a variety of very basic services that we've really lost over the course of the last several years.
Many here are excited that a woman will be leading the way.
Our little girls are going to know that there's going to be two strong Latinas serving them and everyone else in the city of Los Angeles from the northeast San Fernando Valley.
Hopes are that perhaps her victory will help inspire more women to participate in the city's political arena. From the San Fernando Valley, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
By the 1980s, four women sat on the city council, and for a short period in the late 90s, five women served at the same time. But by July 2013, the number had dwindled to zero. Well, it's a program that gives inner-city students a path to success through higher education. The SOAR Summer Opportunity Program marks its fifth year, giving students from LA's housing projects hope for the future. Anna Marcos reports.
Mentioned that you live in LA's public housing projects, kids here say, and people already form an opinion of you.
I kind of see that as like a motivation because, you know, like I said, most people think that just because you live there, you're not going to be someone or be successful or do something for yourself.
Well, in the future, I hope to stay in school, you know, get good grades to move on eventually after my bachelor's degree to move on to medical school, to eventually get a doctor's and to hopefully become a pediatrician.
These students are proving the cynics wrong. Salvador Reyes and Jemani Martinez, a UCLA-bound student with a 3.88 GPA, are among the high school grads who just earned a college scholarship at the SOAR Summer Opportunity Workshop, an event run by the Housing Authority of the city of LA with other partners.
This is just part of the broader mission of the Housing Authority, to not only provide, you know, the physical structures, the housing itself, but to make sure that we're supporting the families and the younger generation coming up so that they have the opportunity to contribute back.
The goal here, of course, is to motivate students and get them thinking about college and higher education. The program also includes a one-day workshop to learn all things college, as well as how to get financial aid. As for the scholarship, well, you had to do a little extra homework to get that.
For those that are getting scholarships, they all provided us with essays to talk about their background, their strengths, their dreams, and it's really exciting to see them speak so positively and dream so big.
And as for that 3.88 GPA student, she wants to give back by staying in her community in South LA to help those who can't afford healthcare. It seems these scholarships are already paying off big. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
A total of 23 high school seniors received scholarships. While we've reported a lot about solar rooftops, and while this is not the biggest, it's certainly the most powerful. Gil Reyes shows us what's happening from the roof in San Pedro.
It is the most powerful rooftop solar project in the entire world.
Los Angeles now leads the country with the most installed solar power of any city in America. We lost the crown for a moment to San Diego. This takes it back, so take that.
Climate-friendly Mayor Eric Garcetti excited over the new Westmont Solar Rooftop Project. We're atop Westmont Distribution Center in San Pedro, near the 110 freeway, home to 2 million square feet of rooftop solar panels. Panels collecting not just direct sunlight, but also reflective sunlight bouncing off the roof. 16 and 1/2 megawatts worth. That's a lot.
This project provides enough power for 5,000 single-family households.
LADWP general manager David Wright says Westmont is participating in the DWP's Feed-In Tariff Program. That's when property owners sell energy collected on the roofs back to the utility.
It's our goal to continue to convert unused rooftops into providing solar energy and create the incentives that we can to encourage developers to build more solar projects.
And why not? We live in southern California where it's sunny most days of the year. Might as well take advantage to create energy, and clean energy at that. The project was completed by PermaCity Solar, creating hundreds of jobs.
We did this together. It's not about PermaCity. It's not about any one person. We all did this together. This is Los Angeles.
In San Pedro, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
PermaCity estimates the carbon emission savings is equivalent to taking 6,000 cars off the street. And by the way, the world's largest rooftop solar project is Apple headquarters in Cupertino. Ours may be the second biggest, but it's also the most powerful. Van Nuys residents and city leaders are breaking ground on a brand-new fire station in the neighborhood. Anna Marcos shows us why Fire Station 39 drew both yay and naysayers, but the yays prevailed.
It's been years in the making, but Van Nuys is finally getting its new Fire Station 39. The current station, the oldest in LA, is a holdover from the Roosevelt era.
We will no longer have to back into the apparatus bays. We'll have a drive-through configuration, which is safer for our firefighters so they don't have to deal with traffic. It's faster to get out the front doors.
It's going to be a very sustainable building. We're going to be using recycled materials, going to have all this natural light. We're going to have stormwater capture, saving lots of water and lots of energy.
But all these modern-day goodies come at a modern-day price. The old fire station was built in 1939 to the tune of $66,000, but this modern-day miracle will cost more like $30 million.
I am just thrilled to death.
Some residents fought hard for the station while others fought against it. Many, it seems, don't want firefighters, at least not in their neighborhood.
They didn't want to have sirens and noise. We had so much stuff thrown in our way to stop this from growing and getting built here. It got verbal, it got physical.
We literally got followed out of meetings. We were threatened with, you know, "You're going to get in trouble for this. You just wait and see." And they threw things at us. They tried to stop us on the sidewalk.
But fire station supporters prevailed, and now they're cheering on the start of construction.
The fire department is here to help you. When they dial 911, what, how lucky are they to be able to literally call 911 and the fire station or the paramedics are right across the street from you?
As for the fire chief's take...
It always helps when we invite them to the station for a meal and/or provide dessert, like a pie or cake. And we intend to be good neighbors.
And come 2019, when the station is built, we reckon these good neighbors will be sending out lots of invitations for pie and cake. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Station 39 will be the 22nd and final station built in LA with Prop F funds, a bond measure passed by voters in 2000. Well, this program aims to stop the cycle of poverty, abuse, and lack of opportunity in the inner city with a scholarship. Oh, but there's so much more, as Anna Marcos takes to the El Nido Family Center Scholarship Awards.
College seems like a distant dream when you're 16 and pregnant. But thanks to El Nido Family Centers, Wendy Isadora worked to make that dream come true. Over the last four years, the program has helped her with family issues, taught her how to care for her son Aiden, and gotten her on track in school. And now, thanks to an El Nido scholarship, she's in college.
I just feel like without any, I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to do much. It helped a lot.
It helped you to know you were a good mom and helped you to do better with your son?
Yes. I thought I was a failure, you know? I thought I wasn't doing, I thought I was just a failure.
Isadora is no failure now. She's studying to be a forensics expert. Today, this El Nido Scholarship Event honors the 44 students receiving scholarships. Many are or have been pregnant teen girls, but young fathers and boys at risk are also part of the program.
I mean, it changed my life dramatically. I'll be the first in my immediate family, my mom, my dad, to go to college. I'm the first to graduate, you know, so it's...
High school graduate?
Yeah.
So far, El Nido has given close to 500 students a shot at a college education, as well as a brighter future, stronger communities, stronger families, and a stronger career.
Our mission is to work with vulnerable youth and families. Our work is all around strengthening families and breaking the cycle of abuse and neglect. One person in the family goes to college, all of a sudden, there's, you know, role modeling, there's hope, there's opportunity, and that is transformative.
Oh, and these scholarship recipients have to give back as well. Zumara Penya now mentors kids in the program, but at one point, she was a pregnant teen herself. She went into seizures and a coma during delivery.
But you were almost dying.
Yes, and almost dying. You know, that made me realize there's a larger purpose in life for me.
I was a young father myself. I was a young father at age 15. I got a lot of support, a lot of mentorship, and I want to give back. I want to do the same thing.
Okay, recipients, now it's your turn to give back and make the world a better place. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information, visit elnidofamilycenters.org. Well, did you know that Van Nuys once housed a massive theme park that doubled as a brewery? Well, Gil Reyes goes retro with some mementos from the San Fernando Valley's past.
The hub of city government in Chatsworth is awash with pop culture tonight. San Fernando Valley pop culture.
We actually don't have a district office. We have a community service center, and what we've done here with that is we open up this office for city staff to come out here so people don't have to drive all the way downtown. And we also have special events. Tonight, we're having the Valley Relics Museum here, and we have art exhibits.
Area Council Member Mitchell Englander talks about Chatsworth's Valley Relics Museum. It's lending several of its vintage artworks, photographs, postcards, and documents to this government office. Anyone remember Busch Gardens in Van Nuys? It's now a full-time brewery off the 405 freeway. But between the mid-'60s and late-'70s, Busch Gardens was a theme park rivaling Disneyland with water rides, a bird sanctuary, and yes, free beer with the price of admission. Also on display, BMX bikes from the 1970s. Makers like Redline, Mongus, and Gary Littlejohn were the valley's big three BMX makers.
A lot of people aren't really aware of how much history is here in the valley, so this is our way of shining a spotlight on our community, on the valley's history from the 1800s to the 1980s.
Owner Tommy Jalinas opened the museum four years ago to honor the past. Honored tonight, the councilman's chief of staff, John Lee, who is stepping down after years serving the valley. Lee helped secure money to build the Greg Smith LAPD Devonshire Youth Center and other buildings. While those facilities still stand, you can check out artifacts from a bygone era at the Valley Relics Museum. It's open on Saturdays. In Chatsworth, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Valley Relics Museum is located at 21630 Maria Street in Chatsworth and is open on Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Over at Echo Park Lake, the lotus flower was the star of the show as it made its yearly appearance. Hundreds of folks came out to see the flower in bloom and to experience a new Asian culture. Rasha Goel has more.
Echo Park's famous lotus flowers bloomed just in time to provide a beautiful backdrop for this year's 37th Annual Lotus Festival. The two-day celebration honors Asian cultures with food, art, and music, giving something for everyone in the family to enjoy.
We can have a better understanding of different diverse groups that compose our city.
This year's featured country was Bangladesh.
I think this type of festival encourages the people to love each other.
We'd just like to bring in the Asian culture here to the Angelinos.
The Lotus Festival went dormant in 2011 as Echo Park closed for a two-year renovation project, where the lake was drained and restored and the lotus beds were replaced.
The renovations and refurbishment has been incredible, and it's just brought people from all over LA to the lake, which has been great. And the festival is just, you know, kind of the cherry on top.
The event attracts well over 20,000 people throughout the weekend, for sure.
Multicultural attractions such as this festival have become part of an LA tradition spanning nearly four decades. I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Law enforcement officials warn LA residents about a phone kidnapping scheme targeting the Southland. LA goes for the gold as host of the 2028 Summer Olympics. And city officials hope offering more money through a rebate program will encourage LA residents to fix city sidewalks. All these stories in City B. Law enforcement officials are warning the public about a spree of virtual kidnapping schemes that have scared people into paying thousands of dollars in ransom money, even though their loved ones were never in danger. The FBI and the Los Angeles Police Department say they've seen an increase in the crimes over the last two years, which involves suspects calling people and telling them they are holding a family member hostage. Over the last two years, police reported more than 200 incidents in LA, with victims paying out more than $114,000 in ransom money. A Texas woman has been arrested and is facing multiple charges in connection with the ransom scheme. Officials say there is something you can do.
Contact your loved one in question immediately should you get a call like this and confirm that they are okay. And then contact the FBI or law enforcement.
Los Angeles has struck a tentative deal with the International Olympic Committee to host the 2028 Summer Olympics. Los Angeles originally bid to host the 2024 Summer Games, competing with Paris, but the IOC recently approved a plan to name a host of both the 2024 and 2028 Games simultaneously. The plan must still be approved by the LA City Council and the U.S. Olympic Committee Board. Under the terms of the contract, the IOC would advance $180 million to a Los Angeles organizing committee due to the longer planning period and to fund youth sports in the years leading up to the Games.
Hundreds of millions of dollars more that allows us to be able to put back into programs, starting as early as next year, access to sports for every kid in every zip code here in Los Angeles. That's something worth fighting for.
As part of an effort to repair all of the city sidewalks over the next 30 years, Los Angeles officials have increased the amount property owners can receive through a rebate program. The rebate cap was originally $2,000 for homeowners and $4,000 for commercial property owners, but that has been raised to $10,000 for everyone to encourage more participation. The rebate program is part of Safe Sidewalks LA, a program approved by the city council last year to spend at least $30 million a year over the next three decades to fix about 11,000 miles of sidewalks throughout the city. Property owners must apply with the city to participate in the program, then pay for their own repairs. For more, visit sidewalks.lacity.org. If you or your kids love those giant elephant ears, well, you've got one more pair to look at, as the LA Zoo welcomes a new elephant into its herd. Anna Marcos takes a look as Shonzie settles in.
Shonzie, the LA Zoo's newest elephant, loves to eat, and she's having a heck of a good time shaking down the hay nest in her new zoo habitat and making it rain hay. Some of her spectators, though, don't enjoy the dust and hay so much. Even the zookeepers have a healthy respect for her. They're keeping their distance as they get to know her better.
We don't go directly in with our elephants. We are protected contact, which means there's always a barrier between us and our elephants. That doesn't mean that we can't do all the things that they need to have done to them for their care. They know us. They know us by voice, by smell, by sight, and we can ask them to do pretty much anything. Show us their feet, their ears, open their mouth so we can check their teeth. They're on that side of the fence. We're on this side. They're very intelligent.
Shonzie, who's a very elderly, 46-years-old, came from the Fresno Zoo after her longtime partner died. She joins three other elephants at the LA Zoo, a male and two females. So far, she's only been able to smell and hear them and see them from far off.
You know, they are a social animal in the wild. They would run in herds. They'll first let them kind of interact through the fence, and, you know, they can touch, they can smell, and they'll start to get kind of an idea of how they're going to interact with each other. Are they showing aggression towards each other? Do they really enjoy being together?
Shonzie has plenty yet to discover once her quarantine is up, like the deep waiting pools, sandy hills, bamboo trees, and of course, the other elephants.
To her, this is all new. This is, she found grass and thought that was the greatest thing that was ever created.
Less than a month in for Shonzie, it seems, this place is already starting to feel like home. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Elephants normally live to be about 45-years-old, so Shonzie, at 46, is quite elderly indeed. Sounds like she's off to a happy retirement. Well, enjoy a drive-in movie in the San Fernando Valley. Get into the groove with some of your favorite hits from the '70s, or head on over to the Love Shack for some vintage rock and roll. All this and this week's things to do. Bring your car and join other movie fans under the stars for a screening of movies filmed in the valley. Featuring La Bamba in a retro drive-in setting, each evening begins with a pre-show performance, special guests, and costume contests. The event will be benefiting Valley Relics Museum. A variety of food trucks will be available. The screening of La Bamba takes place Saturday, August 12 at 8:30 PM at the Lake Balboa Complex. For more, visit myvalleypass.com. Enjoy your favorite sounds from the '70s during a free concert on the green. Staying Alive offers the songs and sights of a full Bee Gees playlist, singing blockbusters such as Night Fever, Jive Talkin', How Deep Is Your Love, You Should Be Dancing, Nights on Broadway, and Staying Alive. So come on out on Sunday, August 13 to the Warner Center Park in Woodland Hills. For more, visit valleycultural.org. Come see the B-52s in concert for free. The group will be bringing their cosmic funplex to downtown LA with a night full of dancing and fun. So grab your friends and family and come out for a night of music and maybe even some dancing. The show takes place on Saturday, August 12 at Pershing Square, starting at 8:00 PM. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week. This Week.
911 emergency, operator 271.
The city of Los Angeles receives over 2 million 911 calls every year. Hello, I'm Mayor Eric Garcetti.
I'm Chief Charlie Beck. A significant number of 911 calls are not emergencies.
911 should be used for emergency calls, such as preservation of life, a crime in progress, prevention of a crime, or a public hazard.
If your call is not an emergency, such as a loud party, verbal dispute, public nuisance, or lost or missing property, you can dial 1-877-ASK-LAPD to have the police respond.
Remember, call 1-877-ASK-LAPD for non-emergency calls.
Los Angeles Police Department, what are you reporting?
Hi, this is Caratello family.
We are from Los Angeles.
You're watching Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Good morning. If everybody would please take their seats. Good morning. It is Tuesday, August 8th. Want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10 a.m. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue Wesson, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Martinez moves. Rodriguez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? We'll be led today by Ms. Monica Rodriguez. Flag salute.
Thank you. Face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Madam Clerk, let's continue.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 20 to Wednesday, August 9th.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered.
Items 1 through 4 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all four items.
Okay, continue.
Items 5 through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held, and there is a request to hold item 7 on the table for an amending motion.
Okay, specials. I do not see any. Let us prepare. 11 special. So let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Continue.
And, Mr. President, the orders for items 5 and 6 will be held over one week to August 15th unless reconsidered with 12 members present.
Thank you.
Items 15 through 24 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards?
Yes, there are cards on all items.
Okay, continue.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment.
Item 23, Mr. Resnick. Sergeants, could you clear the center aisle? Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ben Resnick with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler and Mitchell. We're here before you on the second time that a 245 motion is brought before you to try and undo a unanimous Planning Commission approval of an affordable housing project on Venice Boulevard. There's a raging debate going on in this city about the lack of affordable housing and the lack of housing. Some people think it's regulatory hurdles. Some people think there's just not enough money to go around to build all of that. I would suggest that, having been in the trenches now for many years trying to get projects approved and processed, I think there's a lack of political will. I think there's a lack of political will to actually be able to create the affordable housing. We have the tools. The Planning Commission on this case twice unanimously held hearings and approved this project on Venice Boulevard in a commercial zone with unrestricted height. Yet, we face again a challenge and a review that's totally unnecessary and also illegal. We ask that the council let this project go.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll. There are more cards on this one? Okay, so instead of voting right now, I'm going to call up Mr. Spindler. Give me his items.
You don't want to prevent me from bonching. I don't want to be the boncher. So let's see.
No, one minute, one minute. Hold on.
Yes.
Hold your...
Yeah, hold.
Okay. Just hold on. Point of order.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, what I have for you is items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, 8, and 7, and then your general public comment. So go ahead.
Let's begin with 23. So 23 was a property in CD 11, and apparently you called up the Jewish owners of the property, and they want to build some kind of shit. But anyway, a mixed-use development. We don't want any more mixed-use developments in Venice. No more to the Bonin. No more Bonin mixed-use projects in CD 11. No more road diet Bonin CD 11, assert jurisdiction, 245 bullshit. We do not want that. Stop 245-ing the nice West Los Angeles Planning Commission and the lovely Ms. Margalise that chairs that committee. She knows what she's doing. You don't know what you're doing. That's the fucking difference. So affirm and allow the people to breathe and not have this shit built in their communities. Yes. Now we go to item 1, a vacation. Is that what... Yes, of course, another vacation. Yes, see, we have people here from other countries. It's called corruption. That's what it's called. When you vacate, it means corruption, taking the public right away and giving it to the private Jewish bank owners. Yes, and that's why our country is in such trouble. It's called Trump vacation, and we don't want any more of that shit. Then we have SEQA. SEQA is a good law, but you got it. All of you criminals got SEQA.
Hey, Mr. Spindler, let me stop you for a minute. Hold his time. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Before the speaker speaks on item 7, if he chooses to do so, I should note that an amending motion is going to be circulated, adding or changing a Q condition on number 7 on affordable units to read that a minimum of 4% shall be reserved for lower-income residents and 6% shall be reserved for residents earning workforce incomes. That may inform the speaker's comments if he wants to speak on the item.
Okay, continue, Mr. Spindler.
Yes, okay. So now we have item 7. It's in CD 10. That belongs to Herman Jason Wesson Jr.'s district. Nobody here will vote no. Harris Dawson wants to vote, nobody won't. Yes, too bad. Well, there's nothing we can do about that. So we want to say good. The amending motion improves the corruption slightly, but not very much, no. So now, the rest of this shit, as we go through, 10 votes required. Central Avenue, CD 9. CD 9 is owned by Corin Price. What are you doing here? That's sneaky. Oh, a project, yes. Dell Richardson and Associates would make an excellent consulting firm on number 8. Please amend it for Dell Richardson and Associates.
Okay, just give him his... One minute.
City Watch, City Watch, L.A. Steve Soborov does not pay his dog licenses for nearly 10 years. Why is he a commissioner? As to quote the great Paul Coretts, the last commissioner we had, he referred to that commissioner as an imbecile for not paying dog fees. Well, Steve Soborov goes on social media and shows all his dogs, so they took all the pictures of his dogs for the past 10 years, and he hasn't paid those back fees and interest and penalties. Now, what does Gil Sadio say about that? He goes, no moss. Steve Soborov deadbeat. Steve Soborov resigned from the police commission. Steve Soborov, pay your dog licenses, you thieving scumbag piece of shit. Pay your fucking fee.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, can I get Mr. Walsh on my screen? Mr. Walsh, please come forward. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 15, and your general public comment, Mr. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.com, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 1, this is a vacation portion of Culver Boulevard. This is usually done to accommodate. It's a giveaway to developers. Next is number 2. This is... Anytime you see the word exemption, that means somebody's getting in without qualifications. Because your friends up here that get these jobs, they don't have the qualifications in the charter, so therefore, they're subject to the approval of the mayor. Number 3, category... This is a city engineer. This is a public street. This is... Sometimes it behooves the developer to turn private property into public property, sometimes the opposite. Number 3. Number 4, this is application for determination of public convenience, the sale of alcohol. Everybody who's ever been hit by a car, this is the hit-and-run capital of America, if not the world, and the blood is on your hands. The blood is on your hands and on the hands of the media that won't cover this story because they keep adding and adding liquor licenses, and children are killed, you scumbags. That's the tough... You are all, all 15 of you, and all the media, and these cameramen are all scumbags. That's why we want... What we want is simple. Put a cap on bars. Oh, no, we need them. That's what it says here. We need more. Look, O'Farrell, you think you're politically correct. Your ass doesn't emit shit, but you're the one who votes for these liquor licenses, and there's blood on your hands. Children's blood, you scumbag. And I'm not even mentioning your mother. Okay, so next is city of Los Angeles, 15. This is reappointment of Ms. Garcia to the Board of Animal Services Commission. We need the board.
Okay, let's give you your general public comment.
Okay, public comment. We have the Olympics. The Olympics, I'm telling you right now, the contract that you were about to sign has $250 million cost overrun to start with. That's what you pay. After that, the next $250 million, the state pays it, Jerry Brown pays it. After that, you pay the cost overruns. This, we do not need the Olympics in Los Angeles. It's going to make a lot of people rich, but you... But you gotta understand these people. They don't get up and say, "This is gonna make me rich." I'm doing it for the poor people. Casey Wasserman, his last name is not Wasserman. His... That is his mother's maiden name. Is that your... Is O'Farrell your mother's maiden name?
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, uh... Let's now go, uh... I think Mr. Gus has general public comment, and item 15, Mr. Gus.
Uh, council members, uh, regarding Commissioner, uh, uh, from Animal Services, I have no objection to her. My only question is, especially for Mr. Coretza, Mr. Price, and Mr. Englander, is why is her financial statement still pending? This is a big problem with Animal Services. This is an appointment that goes till 2022. Why does a commissioner not have her financial conflict of interest document done, submitted, and approved? This has been a problem before with previous Animal Services Commissioners. I have absolutely no problem with Ms. Garcia as far as her performance goes, but why are you not vetting these people properly first? I hope I don't have to write an article and go through more higher, uh, higher-level commissioners first. Uh, now, for general comment.
General, uh, public comment?
This is actually a, uh, a comment for the people of Los Angeles. Don't pay your dog licenses. Go to CityWatchLA.com and see my article today. LAPD Commissioner Steve Soborov, I used from public records and from his social media, he owes the city of Los Angeles, this wealthy man owes the city of Los Angeles between $3,515,000. How is it that Steve Soborov gets away with this? Is it because he's your friend? Is it because he's wealthy? Is it because he's a high-profile police commissioner? If anybody in the city of Los Angeles has a dog, I encourage an act of civil disobedience. Don't pay your dog license. Your name will fall out of the system forever. The city will lose the revenue forever. And if you're cited, look at my City Watch article. I will tell you how to defend using the 14th Amendment. If the law does not apply to a crony of the mayor's like Steve Soborov, who owes thousands of dollars, it doesn't apply to you, or me, or any of us.
Thank you. Okay, Susan Roca, please come forward. Items 1, 2, 3, 4, 7, and general public comment. Yes, ma'am?
Um, do I start with general comment?
No, that's your last.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna speak on public comment then.
Okay, let's give her her one minute.
Okay, can I get two minutes?
No, you get one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Mike Fur's office needs some ethics. That I was prosecuted for a crime that I did not commit, and you have this freebie attorney service that comes in and gives new attorneys some, some experience in exchange for some free hours, and you prosecute people like me that are innocent, haven't done anything, no witnesses, no evidence, but because the Catholic Church is behind it, well, we'll prosecute her and, and we'll put her away. And I went to a full jury trial because I was not gonna plead guilty of bardic into something I didn't do. And that's a shame. There's no ethics in your office. None. A jury found me not guilty within minutes. They thought the whole thing was a joke. You need to supervise these people, or you need to get, seriously get rid of that program. Because somebody could prosecute you because they want some kudos on their resume as a new attorney and brownie points with the Catholic Church.
Thank you. Okay, so now, we're... Now, we're gonna vote on items 1, 2, and 3. No, your, your time's expired. Now, we're gonna vote on items 1, 2, and 3. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Can now, we move to item 7 as amended? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, can you pull up Mr. Herman on my screen? 15, 16, 18, 23, 17, 19, and 20. General public comment. Go ahead, Mr. Herman.
It's a real goddamn shame when you got a fifth-place loser whose wife can't pay for her fucking license for her fucking dog.
The Speaker's off topic.
Look, you're off-topic, uh, Mr. Herman. Stay on topic.
Animal Service Commissions, that's what I'm dealing with, rookie. And when you got fucking administrators and elected officials who can't pay their fucking license, rookie, I sure fuck know what the fuck I'm fucking talking about. You got it, rookie? That's why I got a licensed and mom fucked up service dog. So she can be protected against people like you that take action against animals.
Okay, Mr. Herman, I already warned you once, so you have to go and sit down. Now, go on. You get one... No, you were warned. You were off-topic again. Now, sergeants, Mr. Herman's gonna go sit down. No, in fact, you can be... You keep... You're continuing to disrupt the meeting. You're continuing to disrupt this meeting, Mr. Herman. Mr. City Attorney, he is still disrupting this meeting.
He is. He's shouting from the benches.
In fact, we, uh, uh...
And he's continuing to disrupt the meeting.
Have him removed. Have him removed. Have him removed.
And he is shouting as he leaves.
Yes, he is.
Disrupting the meeting. Continuing to disrupt the meeting as he leaves.
Okay.
And he's still shouting from the back of the room.
All right. Mr. Kukorian?
Just, uh, for the record, sir, I was having trouble hearing what you were saying because of the shouting and noises that Mr. Herman was making on the way out. I couldn't hear what the president was saying from the podium. So I just wanted to make the record clear that Mr. Herman's disruption was so significant that I couldn't hear what the president was saying.
Thank you. Duly noted. Let's move to item 4 at this point. Mr. Cho, Michael Cho, item 4, please come forward.
Uh, we're here today asking for, uh, determination of public convenience or necessity for an off-sale license for a portion of a 65,000-square-foot restaurant and retail store located at the Century City Shopping Center that is owned by Westfield. And we hope that, uh, the addition of the alcoholic spirits... I know there was some comment about it earlier, uh, but it is well-controlled within the store by an experienced operator, and, uh, we do not, uh, feel that, uh, there would be any type of law enforcement problems related to it. And we hope that you can make the determination our favor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, on item 4, let's open the roll. Madam Clerk, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now, we can take... Let's take up items 15, 16, 18, and 19. Items 15, 16, 18, and 19. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's move on to items 21, 22, 23, and 24. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
I wanna... Madam Clerk, we're gonna take up item 17. Do you wanna explain? I believe this is a two-vote.
That is correct. A substitute motion has been posted and distributed for item 17. The first vote is whether to substitute.
Okay, so let's vote on that. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, now, let's, uh, vote on the item itself. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Madam Clerk, we do have, uh, more than 12 members. Why don't we reconsider, I believe, items 5 and 6? So the first vote should be on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Now, we'll vote on the items themselves, items 5 and 6. Do you need to describe them, or can we just vote?
A vote can be taken at this point.
Okay, so let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
We have any other general public comment? Is Mr. Resnick still here? Is Mr. Ben Resnick still here? I don't see him. Is that the last? Mr. Weezer, are you ready with your presentation? Mr. O'Farrell?
And before Mr. Weezer, uh, begins his presentation, I'd like to acknowledge some very special guests that I have in the chamber today. And they are a delegation from the Los Angeles Youth Network sitting in the back. Please wave and, and make your presence known. Los Angeles Youth Network, welcome. Thank you so much.
Give him a round of applause. Welcome.
Now, Los Angeles Youth Network's mission is to empower abused, neglected, and homeless youth to become self-sufficient. They really are doing God's work, and the individuals who make their way through this program become contributing members of society that we all will need to depend on in the future. So, we welcome you, we support you, we're on your side, we have your backs for a successful, uh, full life that you no doubt will lead, thanks to the assistance of Los Angeles Youth Network. Welcome to City Hall.
Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council members and public. I am happy to honor in council our Ecuadorian brothers and sisters as they celebrate the 208th anniversary of the Call for Independence in Ecuador. And we are incredibly fortunate to have a large population of Ecuadorian nationals here in Los Angeles who contribute in many ways to our civic, cultural, and economic success as a city. It is our honor as a city to recognize and celebrate the independence of our brothers and sisters from Ecuador that occurred nearly 208 years ago. El grito de la independencia took place on August 10th, 1809, in Quito, Ecuador, and it inspired other liberations throughout Latin America. And that is why we refer to Quito as La Luz de América, because it was a spark of light that grew into a great flame of independence that inspired Ecuador and other nations to seek their freedom from colonialism. Because Ecuador was the first to shout freedom, others followed, and history remembers it well. On Sunday, the Comisión Permanente de Fiestas Patrias Ecuadorians celebrated their 19th annual parade down the streets of Broadway. For 19 years, they have celebrated the independence of Ecuador and what that brought to many other Latin American countries throughout history. It is a great tradition here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations to the Comisión for all they do in keeping the parade strong. And thank you to all the Ecuadorian committees here today who worked hard every day of the year to highlight and showcase the Ecuadorian's pride, spirit, and culture. And we could not talk about honoring Ecuadorian culture and history in the city of Los Angeles without thanking our beloved Elba Berus, who passed away last year, but who left a mark on the celebrations that will never be forgotten. And I remember Elba quite well. Whether she was sick or in her highest spirits, she would always make sure that the parade was a success and that Ecuador was represented in many city celebrations. She certainly will be missed. And so with that, let me present to you Mentor Paderes from the Comisión to say a few words.
Give him a round of applause. It's a great parade. Congratulations. Thank you for all that you do for the great city of Los Angeles.
Muchísimas gracias a ustedes. El pueblo ecuatoriano aquí en Los Ángeles quiera...
We're gonna need an interpreter up here. If someone could come up, please, and interpret. Thank you.
El pueblo ecuatoriano aquí en Los Ángeles se siente muy agradecido con la ciudad de Los Ángeles.
The Ecuadorian people in town, we were very proud for the people here in Los Angeles.
Queremos hacer un agradecimiento sincero a este Consilio y también la oficina del señor José Weezer, que durante todo el año nos ha apoyado.
We really like to thank the city councils, especially Mr. Weezer, for all the support they've given us throughout the whole year.
El domingo pasado pudimos juntar a más de cinco mil ecuatorianos que con el corazón partido porque estábamos celebrando en esta gran ciudad, pero teníamos a un gran país también lejos de nosotros.
Last Sunday, we were celebrating with a broken heart because we were celebrating so far away from our country.
En esta ocasión solamente nos queda decir gracias a Los Ángeles, gracias a los Estados Unidos, y que Dios bendiga América.
In this occasion, all I wanna say is thank you to the city of Los Angeles, thank you to the United States, and thank you to America. Thank all of you.
Vive el Ecuador!
Viva Ecuador! Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to, uh, just thank Mr. Weezer for bringing the group with us this morning. Ecuadorians play a powerful role in our community, and we're so honored to have them throughout our city. I had the honor of being the grand marshal at the parade a couple of years ago. It was a tremendous experience, one I will long, uh, remember. And I just wanna let you know the solidarity is there with the people of the 9th District. Congratulations. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you. And as you know, Mr. President, our city prides itself on its diversity. No matter how big or small people are, uh, the communities from different countries throughout the world are in Los Angeles, how big or small they are. Ecuador, uh, by far, uh, it may not be the biggest, but they're certainly one of the loudest and one with the most pride. Uh, no matter where you go throughout the city, if there's an Ecuadorian there, you know it because they're showing their pride and their colors. Felicidades. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, we want to congratulate you on 208th-year anniversary of independence and your successful parade for 19 years here in the city of Los Angeles. Felicidades. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And again, congratulations. I'd now like to recognize Mr. Sadio on item 11. Let's wait a moment, Mr. Sadio. The floor is yours, Mr. Sadio.
Colleagues and, um, members of the audience, let me see. That today, we are simply asking the city attorney to draft an ordinance to make, um, disclosure mandatory. Uh, the city needs to have all the information available to assess if potential contracts and service agreements are equally beneficial to our constituents and to promote fair business practices. This measure is being brought forth so that we have transparency amongst contractors. And we wanna know if there are people who do business with the city of Los Angeles who have a commitment, who share values, who wish to profit from building a wall that would divide us from our nearest and dearest neighbor, Mexico. Uh, this is something that we have a right to know. Uh, we, in Los Angeles, have been very clear on our position on this matter. We oppose the wall and support building bridges. And we believe that that is the best way to build relationships between, uh, our city and the nation of Mexico, our nation and the nation of Mexico. And so, we're here today asking, uh, for your support. Uh, unfortunately, today, immigration policy in the White House is driven by racists like Stephen Bannon and Avao... Stephen Bannon and avowed professional anti-immigrant zealots like Chris Corbok, people who make it their profession to scapegoat the presence of immigrants in our nation. Immigrants are the foundation here in Los Angeles of our economy. They are tightly woven into the social fabric of this city, and you cannot, you cannot separate them or divide their families here in this city without disrupting the character of this city. Our nation is a nation founded by immigrants. They played a central role from its very beginning. They continue to play a role in its existence. But most importantly, immigrants are the future of this nation. They are, in fact, the people who will be replacing boomers who leave the workforce. They are, in fact, those who will be making the new inventions, creating the new businesses, building on new technology. They are those that we rely on for the prosperity of this nation, and we should do all that we can to build bridges to Mexico and to other nations of the world, and let them know that America continues to be the beacon of hope for all immigrants, because it is the one place that people can come to realize their greatest hopes and aspirations. Let me note as a relevant fact that yesterday in my district, the court ruled that the father Romelo Avica Gonzalez, who has taken from his vehicle as he dropped off his daughter, man who's lived here for decades, the court ruled that the stay for his deportation would remain in place. And the court has continued to stand tall and strong during this Trump era, and we are thankful for our great constitution and for the courts who recognize the rule of law. That was an important victory for us. I ask you to join me in supporting this resolution as another important victory as we get through this dark era of the Donald Trump administration. I think...
Thank you, Mr. Sadiel. And I do think that it's important for us on this council to send a message as to where it relates to what our values are and the type of people that we wanna do business with. So I commend you for this effort. With that said, Madam Clerk, if you'd please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Madam Clerk, what additional businesses before this body?
Mr. President, there is a request to send item seventeen forthwith.
Okay, I had a note telling me that. I was just checking to see if you would remember that. Now, if you believe that. Thank you, 'cause I, I had, I had forgotten. So let's, without objection, send seventeen forthwith. Mr. Bonnet.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to acknowledge some guests here in the room. I'd like to recognize some outstanding students here today with the nonprofit YES. I want you guys to stand up.
Stand up. Stand up.
Yes's vision...
And let's get the camera on them.
YES's vision is to reshape the landscape of low-income communities by empowering underserved students to fulfill their greatest potential. They identify young leaders and equip them with academic skills, resources, and the support required for the success in high school, college, and career. They're here from thirteen different middle schools from all across LA, and they're here with YES educators Rachel Torrey and Emily Warner as part of their summer program. They support over two hundred students in grade seven through college from the LA area, and they're here today to learn about local government and to tour our city hall. Welcome.
Welcome. All right. Madam Clerk, back to you. Business before this body.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted, they are referred. Announcements, members, announcements. If I could have everyone please rise. Everyone in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. Announcements. Mr. Sadiel.
Yes, tonight at the Universal Church, there will be a very large and robust meeting on immigration. We have an immigration forum. It's at the Universal Church tonight, and that is at six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
Thank you. Any additional announcements? So now I look to my right for adjourning motions. I do not see any to Mr. Root.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. I'd like to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of Helen Freeman, a Holocaust survivor and incredible advocate for social justice and human rights. From a young age, Helen knew that her family was central to her identity. Helen was born in Radom, Poland, and was the fifth of seven children and the only daughter in her family. Helen was a teenager during World War II, and when the German forces bombed and occupied Radom and relocated Helen's family to the ghetto, although the living conditions were miserable and food scarce, Helen believed that everything would be all right because she was with her family. However, soon her family began to get separated. First, her brother and sister-in-law were selected for deportation. Then Helen was sent to a construction company and later transferred to a labor camp. Even in these incredibly harsh conditions of the camp, Helen took care of the people around her like they were family. When Helen arrived in Auschwitz, she secretly secured her mother's earring to her shoe lining as a physical reminder of her family that gave her the hope and strength to survive. Helen was twenty-three years old when the camp was finally liberated. And after World War II, Helen and her husband Joseph immigrated to the United States, sponsored by the Pasadena Jewish Temple and Center. In America, family remained central to Helen's life. And although she was unable to speak English, Helen worked diligently to provide for her children to ensure that they had a normal life. In nineteen eighty-one, Helen began speaking about her life, was, how her life was affected by the Holocaust. She and Joseph traveled to schools, churches, synagogues, and civic groups across Los Angeles to speak about her experiences. With each visit, she urged students to remember the Holocaust by speaking up in the face of cruelty and injustice. After her husband's death, Helen alongside with, alongside her daughter Cece and her granddaughter Jamie, was a founding advisory board member for the Righteous Conversation Project. The project allowed Helen to share her story with thousands of students over a six-year period. Using her voice as a call to action, Helen asked students to use new media to speak about contemporary social justice issues. She spread a simple yet powerful message: Be good to each other, help each other. Helen's incredible dedication to sharing her story and advocating for social justice has laughed, has left a lasting impact in our community. She brought her values of family and kindness to all those around her and inspired countless number of people to stand up for others. Helen is survived by her daughters Lillian, Renee, and Cece, her son Louis, eight grandchildren, and one great-grandchild. Helen served as an inspiration to us all, and her memories should, and her, and her memories should continue to do so for years to come. And I had a fortunate opportunity to, I know her daughter well, and I know many of you know Cece Fowler from the Jewish Federation, and I was able to meet her mother Helen when her granddaughter did a presentation and exhibition at the Holocaust Museum. So it was an amazing to see such a powerful woman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Root. I'm now looking to my left side, Mr. Sadiel.
Yes, I wish to adjourn in the memory of a very dear man from our district, Danny Munoz. He's a longtime resident of Angelino Heights. Danny's, was one of these collectors, archivists, and he was the co-founder of the Echo Park Historical Society and actively served on the HPOZ of Angelino Heights. Was a member of the Echo Park Security Association and a longtime board member of the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Park. He, with his partner David Heilvik, had restored their nineteenth-century Victorian home in, all you are familiar with Angelino Heights, right down the street. He turned his attic into a thousand-square-foot archive center of historic photos, documents, and memorabilia of Los Angeles history. He was a community activist. During the break, unfortunately, he passed away from undiagnosed case of liver cancer. And so he leaves a community of friends, his partner, he's a proud graduate of Belmont High, just very dear man, warm-hearted, very popular. He leaves his partner behind and many friends and family, and he's gonna be sorely missed. His departure was unexpected, and so he will be missed by all in CD one.
So thank you, Mr. Sadiel, and thank you, Mr. Root. Mr. Englander, it looks like we're finished with our adjournings, but we have a group of good-looking young folk here. Can you run out, Mr. Englander, and find out who we, who they are so we can introduce them? I want, I want you guys to get in the photo. Maybe you can shift back into the aisles.
Yeah, come on in. As a...
So maybe...
Yeah, these, these fine folks are, are from Council District Eight and cohort of summer interns, in fact. And so we wanna welcome them to City Council. And this summer, they were fortunate to have, CD eight had twenty interns working alongside their entire staff. So these interns put in countless hours, working with some of the evening, evening and weekends. That's certainly getting prepared for real council work, working on everything from scheduling, writing press releases, assisting with legislative team and research, evening events, districts during the community cleanups, movies in the park. These guys did it, I'm gonna become an intern at CDA. This is, you guys, this is awesome. And anyway, I, I know that the councilman had to step out, but he sensed his best, and we wanna welcome you all. Peter, Karen, Aaron, Etchell, Ernest, Jacela, Diane, my, there's a lot of them. Nina, Nelson, Mary, Rachel, Angela, Michelle, Destin, Melissa, Madeline, Carolyn, Sonia, and Courtney. Let's give them all a big round of applause.
Yeah, Mr. Harris Dawson.
Mr. Harris Dawson.
We just met your twenty... Mr. Harris Dawson, we just met your twenty thousand interns.
We've often... And I'm taking them all. CD fifteen's gonna take them. We, we've often been mistaken as twins. So, that has happened on occasion.
So, Mr. Englander represented you well, but you may wanna say a word or two about these fine people, because I would just say that you guys are the leaders for tomorrow, and it really does each and every one of us good to see young people that wanna get engaged at an early age. So we all are happy for each and every one of you, and we commend you. But, Mr. Harris Dawson...
Thank, thank you so much, Mr. Chair and, and members, and especially Mr. Englander for standing in. This is just such an amazing team. You all have been such an inspiration to not only our team but to the entire community in, in Council District Eight. We're extremely proud of you. We're excited about what you're gonna bring to the future of our neighborhoods and our cities. So thank you from the bottom of your heart and to the other council staffs. Before they go, we're willing to take on any of you all in football or basketball or squash or anything. I feel like we got a good squad. Thank you all so much.
Let's give him a round of applause. What you have is youth, okay? That's what you have. Anyway, there's, any additional business? I don't believe this meeting is adjourned.